Good morning and thank you everyone for attending our open session meeting. I need to. The board had enclosed session and we discussed a conference with real property negotiators, property moral elementary and sunny side elementary agency negotiator Harold Freeman of Los Angeles Smith. Negotiating parties SLC USD and city of moral bay under negotiation vice and terms. At this time, I'd like to see if there's anyone from the public here who would like to address the board. As we go into public, as we go into our open session, this could be about items not on the agenda or on the agenda, but would like to participate now. And you will have three minutes to address the board on items have under board jurisdiction. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
There is not.
Thank you. All right. And our first item for discussion is six point oh one AI future impact education.
Dr. Krater, would you like to say a few words or shall I again?
I would. I was multitasking poorly. Hello. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to just for a moment acknowledge this topic today. Artificial intelligence or AI and has arrived on our scene quite dramatically over the last several months. And with the the launch of chat GPT. If any of you have gotten a chance to get on there, you'll see what what is what is happening as it impacts our teachers, the university systems, and most especially our students. Our students are utilizing these artificial intelligence mechanisms to to expand their learning, but also to quite frankly, take advantage of some of the traditional models in the classroom. And so it's one of those things, are we the last to know what's happening here? I want to take a different angle to this, which is why I want to thank Lisa Yamasta and her team Jeremy and Stephanie for joining us and giving you kind of a one oh one of AI. And this would be the beginning of probably several conversations we'll have as we move along. And and the reason is, is I don't want to take a position that is a glass half empty or a preventative position like, oh, man, we got to stop this from happening, but rather take a foot back and say, what are the possibilities for us as as an K twelve organization to not just take advantage of the potential of this, but also empower our teachers, empower our students to expand their learning, to to explore different types of learning and different types of applications to learning. I am super excited for what this could become. Obviously, I want to create a framework so that we can work within that framework as best as we can. But first step is to present to you, well, what in the world is this? And how, once we get a better understanding of what it is, then we can begin to explore how we as a school district will will partner with it, if you will. So Christine Robinson is here from our foundation. And what makes Christine an important person in this room is that our foundation has become a thought partner for us, a lever for innovation. And that is a really, really important component to this conversation. The foundation board and our ability to derive funding dollars or donations from our broader community will largely be anchored to this idea of innovation and changing the K twelve landscape so that our students are prepared as our vision clearly states for a life of purpose and to become relevant in the future workforce. And so this is a critical conversation for everyone in this room. It aligns to our vision, our mission, our guiding principles, and to better to best prepare our students for the future. So there you have it. That's my introduction. I asked Lisa and Christine to help guide this conversation. They brought in Jeremy, which is fantastic, and Stephanie. So from that, Lisa, are you ready to take us off?
I sure am.
Okay, there you go. Now, would you prefer the board? Would you prefer to go through this or do you want to stop at the end of every slide and ask if there are any questions? What would be helpful to you?
We have prepared in the opening for you to have an opportunity to list what questions and what thoughts or concerns come up in the beginning, and then we will revisit it also at the end of the presentation to make sure all your questions are answered. So it's probably best that we we try and hold questions back and forth until the the end of the of the presentation opportunity. Christine and Jeremy and I will be here with you the whole time. But at the opening, we're actually going to get an opportunity to interact with some of the AI platforms that are most popular and have been used the most by our staff already. So you'll have an opportunity and during that time it will be open back and forth discussion. So thank you for that. And again, like Dr. Krater said, this is really meant to be an opening, a dialogue. We are not here to make any final decisions today. It's so that you all can learn alongside me and my team as we venture into these new spaces. I do hope that you all have an opportunity to share your own experiences with AI in the workplace and in your lives. And we do want to encourage that, encourage that as well. Marilyn, can you hear me okay? Yeah, great. Okay. So I also want to acknowledge that that we had a lot of other participants in the preparation of the presentation today. Jane Holly Artosa, Zach Roper, a teacher at Slow High. I met with Lindsay Sandsberry, an English teacher at Slow High, and they all informed our work on this presentation today, but they couldn't be with us. So I want to acknowledge my gratitude to all of them for their collaboration. So if you'll go into the presentation on the very first screen, you can click on this actual. You should be able to click on the box or the questions. There you go. If you click on the questions, it'll take you to the Google Doc where you can go ahead and anonymously write down what questions and thoughts or concerns you have and want to make sure that we can address as we move through this process. So we'll give you a little quiet think time and time. I can come around and help people get in and that would be helpful.
Marilyn, can you see how to do that or or you can.
I'm sorry, Ellen, do I need what?
Yes, are you able to see the screen for asking questions and understand the process?
Yeah, I'm gonna see it and I'm just gonna ignore it. And then at the end, I probably will have questions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And if questions come up during the presentation, I always.
Jeremy, I it's it's requesting access.
The document?
The document.
Yeah. To think about using technology in the classroom, you have to be nimble and get the people in.
So Jeremy, I need editing access. I have now got the document, but I need edit access.
Have you got it, Dr. Krater? The circle button at the top.
Yep, there it is.
There. Woo, sorry.
Sorry.
Report for your missive. And then we can, we can continue to return to this page if we need to.
Yes, absolutely can return to this page during the presentation today. You can also add to it later. Hopefully, we will be able to address some of these questions and concerns as we go through the presentation today. But also I'll be able to follow up in Friday focus, the communication to answer if we need more information and keep the board of trustees updated. This is definitely a journey and a process. This is not going to be, you know, an end today. With that, please let me know if you're ready. It looks like Mark, you're ready for me to move on.
Lisa, could you scroll, could you scroll up, please? I'm not seeing. Thank you.
Yes. Also make it larger so it's easier to read.
That's great.
Of course, you can ask questions as as they come. Shall I?
Yes, please.
So if you're finishing up your question, feel free. Thank you for participating in that, and that will definitely help guide our future exploration and work. So I wanted to make sure that you all, as we're talking about AI, actually have experiences and awareness of the types of tools we're discussing. Last springtime, chat GPT produced by OpenAI was kind of the first news catching grab. But as you'll see later in the presentation, there are many forms of AI that likely have already infiltrated your life, whether you know it or invited it in. And there are also many different types of AI generative tools. But since this was kind of the first big splash on the scene, I wanted to show you how it works and how to use it and give you an opportunity to use it if you choose to. So this picture is a hot link if later or you want to click on it, you can, but I'm going to walk you through. When you do, you'd have to do sign up if you're new, but I'm already in, so you can do login. And since I have an account, I say continue with Google. And I already made an account with school. Our staff through our IT department already has access to get to the this website when they're on our network. Our students are blocked and do not have access to get to this website while they are on our network. That's our current state.
Hey, Jeremy?
Yes.
All I'm seeing is chat GPT and send a message.
That's perfect.
That's what we all see.
That, okay.
That's what we all see. And so I wanted to give you an example that educators often use. For example, when you're trying to plan a lesson, we can do lesson plan for fourth grade of food webs. And you type it in and press go. Oh, how funny. I did this the other day and it worked. Let's try it up here. Fourth grade lesson of food. Yeah, Christine and I did this twice to make sure it would work today. So I'm terribly sorry.
It's all right. This is the bakeries of technology. We're all in this together.
Well, what it would traditionally do, I can explain it to you. Is it working for you?
Lisa, you might need to go into your personal email.
Yeah, we totally. Do you want to log in? So I'll log out. Do you know what your login is? Sure, give it a shot. Give it a shot.
Use my laptop.
We can have you share when you drive. If I drop the share. Mr. Clausen, are you able to share a screen?
Ryan, you should be able to now.
Yeah. But so right.
Fourth grade lesson plan on food webs.
Food web.
Web. It's a fourth grade standard through the MGSS.
Good luck.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. There we go. Thanks, Brian. Way to save me. And you'll see that immediately it starts to design web lesson. Now, this is pulled from data on the web. Obviously, we haven't vetted if this is a great lesson or not. But what I can tell you is what's exciting about using this model is we're like, wait a minute, we are teaching here in San Luis Coastal. And so we want a lesson on fourth grade food webs in the San Luis Coast, California coast. So if you can re-prompt, please, Brian.
Yep.
Fourth grade lesson food webs, California coast. And what it will do is it will now regenerate a little bit different lesson. And it'll start coming up with, tell us about the California coast. It will show show a picture of the California coast. So now we're able to do some place based learning immediately in our classroom. But we know that kids don't want to just learn from books and hear from a teacher. And so we're going to refine our search again to add fourth grade lesson, food webs, California coast, hands on activity. So now we know that students are going to be doing some kind of touching feeling kind of thing. And now it's a 60 minute long web lesson that includes paper and scissors to do a little bit different stuff.
How many hours I spent doing this by hand?
Well, we still need educators with master's degrees to decide if what this is turning out or giving to us is the best first instruction we can give. We need to double check, is it aligned to standards? But really, the purpose of this is I wanted to show you that for our educators, as in terms of a starting place, this can be a really useful tool. So this is just one example of how educators can use chat GPT. Thank you so much, Mr. Clausen, for sharing that with us.
Any, any other?
Nope, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to a different type of AI generator. We're gonna, well, we're gonna see if this one's gonna work, and I hope it does. Let me actually hold on. On the next slide, I'm gonna do it in steps. I already opened up a tab. So another type of generator is an art. Oh, no, that's not what I wanted. I stopped sharing in a second. Where I need to go. There we go. To the next slide is Adobe Firefly in beta. So this is another type of generator that's in like a graphic digital arts generator. So I'm gonna click, you can click on it again. It should work. You all have had accounts made through your SLC USD, through Jeremy's team. So you should all be able to login yourself on this one, whether you have, you already have an account.
Wait a minute.
Okay, good.
We've been playing with it all day.
Okay, good. So glad. So this one, I gotta move, but you can get your pictures out of the way. So for example, this one, you can type in mission San Luis Ovispo generate. Should generate pictures of the mission. If it doesn't, I already have it up in another slide. There we go.
And right now it's just compiling image.
There we go. So these are some images it pulled off. And what I've done is I like to switch, I like, I, since I'm I'm baby at this product, but I like to go, okay, I want more of a graphic image. And I really like this, I consider it artsy palette knife fridge. And then you push generate. And it will take those images that you already had, and it will reimagine them at in the artwork, the style of art you want.
Do you want to share a creative, so like one of Zach Roper's go to examples? He demonstrated this for us last week was a frog in medieval knight's armor.
Okay, so let's do it. Just to show you the creative potential. Yeah. That is pretty silly. And one of the ways that Zach collaborated with Lindley Sandsberry was they had students give ideas as a generator to this art design project. And then the students were handed those images in an English class and got to write a narrative, right? So what could we creatively come up with to write a story about why there is this knight in this frog in the medieval knight's armor? So that was one of the creative ways our staff has already collaborated together to use the AI. Do any of you want more time to play in it or shall I continue to move on? So AI is already shaping the world of work. In 2018, the World Economic Forum says that nearly 75 million jobs globally will be displaced, but there'll be 133 million new ones. And as I share data and information with you, I did create a bibliographic style list of articles at the end of the product, so you can reference them later. But similarly, by 2030, 30% of the current US workplace activities likely are going to be automated and accelerated by generative AI. And here I just linked the article we were referencing already to bottom for you. So Christine got to participate at Pal Poly in an event that she's been telling you more about and share about kind of AI in the world of work.
So I know Eve was able to join us earlier this year. We organized a forum of K twelve educators and university faculty to just begin a dialogue about AI and education. And I think everyone in the room would comfortably say produce more questions than answers, but it was a fascinating dialogue about the underlying architecture of AI, how that is impacting a range of different industry and workforce trends, and then how educators can reverse engineer their instruction, understanding the types of competencies, skills, the types of competencies, skills, friendly insights that students are gonna need in order to effectively harvest and direct these AI tools going forward. And so looking here, this is a, a little of a snapshot into how AI is currently, and this is changing very rapidly, but currently anticipated to impact different industry sectors. And so which industries or professions are being most resilient to, you know, being displaced by AI? And you see up there that this first series of bullets. The professions listed in blue are those that are frankly going to be the most responsive constructively. They're gonna see a lot of growth and job creation because of AI. So anything in blue, they're forecasting that jobs will increase because of the addition of AI-based opportunities. When you get over to the far right, what we see are the types of, um, and it looks like some of our color got a little thrown off.
Okay.
Um, because on the right, you are supposed to see in red um industries that are forecasted to be most negatively impacted by AI and automation, where we're gonna see an overall reduction in the number of employment opportunities in those sectors. And so that far right are where we're seeing a constriction in the workforce. Now, you've heard me talk before about how the changing nature of work is anticipated to impact economic opportunities for our historically underserved populations. So those jobs on the right certainly do consider transition jobs. They're low-skill jobs that create a, a low-threshold entry point into the workforce and then allow for individuals to have professional growth over their lifetime. What we're seeing is a forecasted displacement of a lot of those entry-level transitional job opportunities, which means the entry into the job market is going to get increasingly more and more highly skilled. So to get jobs in the new economy, today's kiddos are gonna need a variety of very, very future-facing, you know, kind of high skills. Alright. So I wanted to give you just a quick snapshot of how AI is showing up, just in a few specific industries. And so, you know, as Lisa mentioned, generative AI, which is based on something called a large language model, uh, which creates that language-based output. That is just one form of AI. It's a very consumer-friendly type of AI, which is why it got so much media attention. But there is a vast array of AI technologies and different types of um AI architecture in place right now across the industry landscape. So we see it exploding in the world of agriculture right now. Where drones are using a variety of different um technologies to map, to do heat mapping, temperature mapping, um, you know, kind of build grids, you know, send signals to robotic uh harvesters. So you see in the far right, it's a range of data that's being collected. And then the AI is aggregating that data and making recommendations based on the specific expertise of agricultural practitioners. It's saying, you know, your best prop is X, the best kind of harvest is Y, you need to apply more or less irrigation. The environmental upside of this is enormous. What we're seeing is kind of a convergence of agriculture and environmental protection, because these types of technologies can optimize irrigation, reduce runoff and pollution, um, be a huge resource conservation opportunity. And so I would say in agriculture, the upside, there's a lot of human global environmental potential in using these AI applications. What's gonna be displaced is a lot of our manual labor, our workers. Um, healthcare. Uh, this is an area where if you have spent time around hospitals or healthcare lately, you may have already begun to encounter some of this AI. You've placed a phone call and, you know, gone through kind of a robotic intake process. We see that beginning to infiltrate healthcare, where um you may have a certain automated data collection. It could be through wearable devices where it's real-time capturing your heart rate, your blood pressure, feeding that information back to your healthcare provider, allowing them to monitor you over an extended period of time and then make highly customized healthcare recommendations. Um, and then, you know, we're seeing that some of these technologies frankly do a better job of assessing your data and making diagnostic recommendations without some of the bias that we see in kind of human-to-human uh relationships. And then obviously, um, this one gives me the willies a little bit, but um AI in transportation. Uh, we've seen with Tesla, how that technology's playing out, where you have cameras all around the vehicle, their intake of data, and then you have self-driving, self-driving cars. It is anticipated that long-haul trucking is gonna be the first major expression of automation and transportation, where people have driverless semi-trucks out on the road. And then of course, uh, kind of these office-based jobs, legal, banking and finance, journalism, we're seeing tremendous integrations of AI-based technologies. Cal Poly is working on a project right now around um opening up state legislatures and using AI to mine patterns and trends in legislative behavior and surface insights or intelligence that then informs their journalism. So um really fascinating, exciting things happening in those spaces.
So um what is AI? Do you use a smartphone to navigate from place to place? Do you have a voice-activated assistant in your house? Hey Alexa, hey Siri? Does someone in your family use Pandora or Spotify to listen to music? Do you have a Netflix or Amazon Prime that recommends things you might be interested in liking? And those are all applications which are using AI technologies to look at data that has already been collected about you or people like you and to create a curated personalized list of stuff. It is the science and engineering of creating a computer program that can imitate human intelligence. Um, before I, I go on, I wanted to make sure some of you may have also already had the opportunity to use um an AI in your industry or work or lives. Did anyone wanna share about something they've done with AI?
Sure. Um, I mean, we use ChatGPT regularly to draft marketing content, to um research uh historical facts about our industry, um, to uh create first drafts of responses to long questionnaires we're often required to fill out. Very good.
Anyone else?
I'll share, one of our board members used it to ingest um spreadsheet-based data and analyze the data and provide business insights and make recommendations about how to future-proof his business based on what ChatGPT was understanding in the data that he himself did not understand from the data.
Um, I did include it for you, the definition of Oxford Dictionary. Um, the AI education project defines it as a system that uses algorithms and data to solve problems by finding patterns, making decisions. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year last year, artificial intelligence evolved from an experimental technology few have really heard of, that is now readily available technology, that is widely used by educators and students across the system. And here up in the top right-hand corner, I thought this was a really useful piece because it's AI in five minutes and it's put out by a nonprofit, so I encourage you to check that out more later. Um, Christine, this was the, the slide about the different types of AI.
Yeah, so my, I threw this in here just to really underscore that point, that even though ChatGPT is getting a lot of attention, you know, when AI has been around for seventy-plus years, um, and you know, it started as logic-based, mathematically-based systems that were heavily controlled and directed by a programmer who was writing the algorithm based on a very defined problem and very defined human intelligence. What's happening now through deep learning, neural networks, and the generative AI like ChatGPT is the humans have stepped back and the machine is beginning to do things that the humans don't necessarily direct or program. It is not a human-defined, controlled algorithm in the manner that we were familiar with twenty years ago. And so in speaking to a computer science professor at Cal Poly, his name is Phil Wad Koshvudin, he um is an expert in AI. And he said, one of the alarming things that gives him some concern as an AI expert is universities are no longer teaching the underlying math that directs these AI technologies. Instead, they're teaching computer science kids and computer engineers how to use it, but the computer science programmers, engineers don't necessarily know how to control it. And so that's not to say this is a, AI is gonna take over, the robots are gonna run the world, and humans are gonna be obsolete. But what it does signal that is a cause of concern is that fewer and fewer people are gonna possess the expertise and insight to understand the underlying architecture. And if something goes haywire, understand how to redirect it, which means there are some vulnerabilities in the AI, because it is machine learning from machine, learning from machine over an extended period of time without a lot of positive control back end.
So we're of course here to talk about its impact on education and pays, which is one of um our liability insurance providers, supporters recommends. Um, this was explicitly from them. District should adopt policies for this school year that help students engage with AI in a productive way. AI can, as we discussed, be an asset for teachers and students, but only if we proactively define what the sandbox is going to be for our educators and our students. And furthermore, I wanted to make sure you are aware, CSBA also is doing work on this topic, and the CEO put out a statement to prepare students for the academic, economic, civic, and social challenges presented by the world that's going to greet them when, when they graduate from our systems. There is no way we can do that effectively without confronting the burgeoning technology of artificial intelligence. So two organizations that, that, you know, are very close to our work here at the board level are both directing us to consider more work in this area. So what is our current state here and how are people using it? Um, writing in practice is one of the ways that students, we think, are likely using it. We hear about them using it, as well as staff um are using it. Grammar in Session, Grammarly is one of those technologies. When words get underlined, like they did for me earlier in emails or in Google, that is an AI telling you, oops, go back and look at this. Um, and like I stated before, we can creatively, people are creatively figuring out ways to have staff and have an AI create something like Zach over did, create an image, and then the students are responding to that image. Similarly, you can create a piece of writing at the fifth-grade level and then have ninth graders edit that writing to improve it and make it better when learning about theme or using more effective figurative language. So those are some of the ways AI is already um being used throughout our specific education.
And, and Lisa, real quickly on that last one, one of the things that we're gonna have to grapple with as a district is the way in which our teachers um explore the written word and essays. Um, because kids can just type in, you know, the topic of the essay, and it'll pop out an essay. And then they turn it in, oh, sweet. But just like what Christine was saying about uh computer science no longer teaching the underlying math concepts, I, I want you to know this, one of my kids is actually in AP his world history right now. And the, the way the teacher is teaching complex, quite frankly, lots of information overload, lots of information. And every Friday, they do a um, a writing prompt in handwriting. So they, students now are having to take multiple um inputs, meaning lots of different essays and lots of different um um, various diverse inputs of literature or reading, and they have to condense it into a five-paragraph essay in forty-five minutes. Very challenging stuff. And what I realized with my tenth grader is that while he's consuming this information and making sense of it, handwriting on a Friday for forty-five minutes' time is becoming quite the challenge. And so if I were to project that out five years, ten years, if our elementary schools don't also incorporate the written language, because they're just leaning into the technology, then our, I could see a future where our kids don't quite know how to write. They know how to type, they know how to consume information, but are they able? Because the AP exams are in handwriting, in a closed room for three hours in May. And you have to be not, no computers, you're handwriting. And these are our, what, our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. So I just want you to know, unless that modifies and adapts, we're gonna need to have both as we move along. I don't know how that will play out in the future, but for now, this is a thing.
Yeah. So one of the, I mean, the dominant recommendation that came out of the dialogue amongst universities and K-12 educators at Cal Poly was there's gonna be an imperative to shift to more project-based, application-based, collaboration, presentation types of learning opportunities that don't de-prioritize writing, but think about communication, demonstration of learning beyond simply what can be generated in text.
Yeah.
But think about text plus other demonstrations of writing.
Yeah.
Well, and another quote I was gonna get to later was that if the question you're asking as an educator, your students to produce can be completed by an AI, you probably need to ask a different question. And if you can't ask a different question, because that is within the California standards, you have to teach that topic, then you either need to make it project-based and related to an experience that only your class had, that the AI won't know about. Or you need to find other ways um like drafting, although if you want students to write in a traditional essay in uh Google, you can do that. But you need them to do the outline in Google and do a first draft in Google, and then do a second draft in Google. To try and, to create that through the ChatGPT process would take a child a lot, right? A lot of prompting and copying and stuff. And you would see whole, if you go back in history, you'll see whole pieces or chunks of text put in at the same time. Um, and so there are ways to still have students write essays um in a traditional way, but there are nuances that, that our staff is gonna have to shift. I did wanna share with you, um, these are twelve ideas from Mister Todd Finley, um, ways that ChatGPT can be used by our educators to time-save. And that really is one of the recommendations, is that we help our staff understand if there is an automated task that doesn't require a full thinking, those are times we could, would, should be using the artificial intelligence to help us save time. But we know there is also problems posed by artificial intelligence. And one of the concerns in the research is related to a lax human connection. And so although they're constantly evolving, the human, right? The human element just isn't a part of it. Also, because artificial intelligence is pulling vast amounts of data from the internet, there could be biases and discrimination held within what's already there, present on the internet. And so it is reinterpreting and reusing things with discrimination and bias inherent in them. We also don't want staff or students to lose the ability to think critically or solve problems outside the box. And if they become too accustomed to judge any problem that comes my way, I put it into the machine and the machine will tell me the answer. They're not going to be able to function well in a workforce that comes up with new inaugural problems. And so we wanna make sure they don't do that. And there are obviously lots of data insecurity problems using AI technologies in schools as well, which is why Mr. Kolish is here to speak with us.
Yeah, so it's like, you know, my job amongst many things is, you know, by federal and state laws to make sure that we protect, you know, the students on the air. Like that's the basis of one of the rules and laws and regulations. And as you can see up here on the screen, there's so many different state laws or federal laws. We have to go through every new piece of software that ever comes into San Luis Coastal. We have to vet it. We have to vet that software on this short little list of of state, local, and more policies to make sure it complies even before we can allow it inside our environment. With that being said, with these new AI websites and applications, we have to vet each one of those. And if you really dive into the really boring terms of services that none of us read, you will soon find that most of them say eighteen and over. And there's a reason for that. Is that a lot of these go out and grab internet content and users can be exposed to inappropriate content. And that's not just me like, you know, scaring you because I'm the IT director and that's what I do. We had a real life example, one of our school sites. A teacher gave an assignment to look at this website that had a whole bunch of AI-based like content that you could use. And one of them, the students figured out that you could get extremely inappropriate pictures from that website. And we mean graphic, pornographic photos. And so we were immediately notified that this website has been blocked and the parents were notified of said situation. But that is a risk that we're going to run into. If we don't, if we wholesale approve and we don't take the steps to go through the websites to verify that they're age-appropriate for our students because, yeah, we could run into that very real situation and we already have at San Luis Coastal. So that is something we just need to be very, very, very aware of. And I've been already asked many times by teachers here, like can you open, for example, Google Bard? You know, because we use Google.
We use Google.
And unfortunately, Google Bard says eighteen and over because it scrapes the internet for everything. So even Google is not safe to use for our students. So we have to, if we are going to allow AI in, we really have to vet and make sure that it is for the agents, students, and the law. And so with the Firefly where we're creating the content and the images we just saw, alone, I tried a whole bunch of inappropriate things to see. Even one of them is person being run over by a car. You know what I mean? And it does not allow you to do stuff like that. So Adobe's Firefly has those content protections when it comes to creating. So we have to look at this, we have to take it slow and then evaluate every AI that we want to bring in for students.
You know, Jeremy, when I first got here, 2010, one of the jokes, I will say jokes, but one of the common things I would hear as it, by most people in this district was access denied. That we were, we locked things down so tightly that kids and teachers were not able to manage what they wanted to do. And kids would want to get out and do. So what was happening was the kids were circumventing our filter by going onto their phones and doing their own thing outside of us. And I've always felt that kids are actually smarter than we are in many respects. And we have to, one of my questions or concerns I put up there was, you know, are we adapting and pivoting at the same rate as the students are? Otherwise, we're going to become irrelevant to them. Then why would they come to school? If everything they do is locked down because of this, this, and this. So those laws that you just referred to are super important because there, there's reasons for those laws. But at the same time, we need to double down and make sure that we don't become too cautious when we're asking teachers to engage and become innovative, right? So it's a fine line. I totally get it, but I wanted to at least put it out there.
So the International Society for Teachers, that is the organization, that's one of the leading tech organizations in education, has created a hands-on AI project. And they have already written and created instructional guides for elementary age, middle school age, high school age, and elective style teachers to teach about AI. And this was one of the quotes I thought, as the mother of a ten-year-old, you know, in this world, really spoke to my experience, which is the beauty of AI-supported tools and devices is they blend seamlessly into our lives and we can employ them without giving much thought about how it actually works. But this is obvious to us that we're using tools because we lived in a pretty AI world. But AI just appears to be mysterious and magical to children. And they need to be explicitly taught, there is this thing called AI. This is how it works. These are the dangers of it. This is how you can use it for good and to be more effective. And so we need kids to explicitly understand that there are machines that are running the machines in the background of what we ask. So these are the things that we can do based on the literature review I conducted, how we can help our students in this new world. And we need to develop policies and procedures that can be updated and revised with the stakeholder input of our staff, of our families, of our students, because we need lots of voices in the conversation as we develop these policies and procedures that we're going to be using. It's really important that we help develop a robust digital citizenship slash video literacy program for our students K-12 so that we can be talking about the ethics, the right and wrong to help students live in this new world. We do need to introduce AI tools as they become available and safe for our system to access. And because many of the jobs in the future, like prompt engineer, is a new job that's burgeoning. And it's basically how to get the AI, the thing I was doing, right? Where you create one thing and then tell it, wait, I want you to do this. Wait, I want you to do this. That's like becoming a burgeoning job title in the world. And we want our students to have the skill of how to refine questions or commands to receive the best response. We want to also provide ongoing support to our students and monitor their work using AI and give them feedback. We need to ensure we're still asking critical thinking of the actual students. And we need to stay really up to date because it is constantly a changing landscape that we're trying to adapt to. Again, this is that AI for K-12 organization through ISKE. And they talk about, these are kind of the five big ideas that we should be thinking about how our students need to learn more about. So this is the framework they're using to design lessons for students to engage with AI. And I just, there's a, it is linked at the end of the article if you want to get into it more later, or I can share with you more later. We also need to help our teachers with AI. AI can help teachers. It can help them with data analysis of assessment results. I already showed you efficiency and lesson planning. It can also help design assessments because one of the things our teachers are always concerned about is students, if you use a similar test over and over again, they can maybe represent other people's work as their own, often called plagiarism or copying and cheating. And one of the things AI can do really well is create another question that looks just like this question with different numbers or different contexts. And so you can create multiple different kinds of assessments really quickly. To the right, what I've shown you here is in my exploration of AI, I learned that one of the districts in Southern California, Valverde Unified School District, I believe it was, has purchased this technology device that's called Merlin. It is approved for use K-12. And it's basically, from what I read, I haven't seen an actual demo yet, but it's an Alexa for your classroom. So the teacher can be anywhere in the room and say, hey Merlin, book Google classroom the hall is free. Hey Merlin, assign Johnny and Suzie problems fourteen through nineteen in Google classroom. But that's as I understood what I read. I haven't actually seen it in action yet. And I'm not recommending that we move in this direction. I'm just sharing with you what I found in some of my personal life and about it. So what questions remain for our district team? And we want to move from banning students' use to creating policies for responsible use in AI. So we need to be able to define what may students do with it and what may students not do with it. And it's really an important thing to know is we need to train our students and our staff to never represent work that is completed by AI as their own. And instead, if they choose to use AI tools, they need to cite it, just like they would cite any other resource that they're using to complete their work. What may teachers do with it? We want to outline, they can redesign, redesign learning assessments and projects. They can, they should be designing assessments and assume that students have access to AI outside of our devices. And we need to consider more about what professional development needs to be followed. But in summary, what I want your takeaway to be today is our school district is proactively seeking learning opportunities to explore AI while keeping our students and staff safe. We're leaving the door open to explore how AI can enhance creativity, our teacher efficiency, and student marketing. And we're going to continue to work with experts in the field to learn more about who's using it, how are they using it, and how are they doing it really well. And we're going to continue to engage with the stakeholder groups around us, including university, industry, teachers, parents, and administrators to develop our policies and procedures for using AI. So that brings us to the end of the content I had prepared for you along with my colleagues. I think we have answered some of the questions, but not all of the questions. I noted that were contained in the document. But if anyone has anything that it has brought up or something they'd like as a recommend as a next step that maybe I hadn't considered, we're open to hearing that.
First, I'd like to, we do have a couple people from the public here today. I'd like to know if anyone from the public has a question or comment regarding this presentation. And if you do, please raise, do the little hand raising. Use the hand raising icon on your screen. We'll see if I see anybody.
Yeah, I don't see anybody.
Okay, good. I didn't know you were still with us. Okay, thank you very much. So somebody can come after the door. You know, my questions are contained on the sheet that I'm presenting here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought, Jeremy, I discussed most of this yesterday. When I'm looking at the positions that are going to probably be lost, sort of agriculture, just went set off a barns for. So I'll share with you. I did not pass the bar exam twice. And so I feel like I reached my peak, my thing that said go learn something else. Okay? But some students are not going to be able to fill those new jobs. They're just not going to be there. I think you just have to admit that. And so what happens to families that are making their living in the field? Where are people going to go if you can't pay? We think we have a homeless problem now.
I mean, you know, you know that this is where we personally and the foundation, we feel tremendous urgency around that question because the rate of change is accelerating. And so the question that you're asking every day gets more and more dire for this generation of kids. And I would say there are a couple ways to slice the question and the answer. We can look globally, we can look nationally, we can look regionally. And you know, just speaking from the foundation's perspective, our focus is regional. You know, our kids in our community, understanding what is the changing nature of work in our region? What jobs are forecasted to be impacted negatively or positively? What new jobs could be coming online and what are the skills required for those jobs? And that's where I would say it's a less scary story. It's a story of change, but it's also a story of incredible opportunity. Because what we don't see in the regional forecast about the future of work are jobs that require everybody to be a coder. It's not.
Say it again, I'm just still.
We don't see jobs that require everybody to be a computer programmer or, you know, some, you know, technology expert. Instead, what we see are, is a huge explosion of jobs and I would call them technician jobs. These are hands-on, learning how to maintain and repair robotic tractors. So it's a, it's understanding computing, electronics, robotics. But you look at what ACI jet has built with their aviation maintenance technician program out of Cuesta. That is a future-facing job that is capturing students who traditionally would never be college-bound. These are kids who are the next generation of, I'll say, mechanics. But they're mechanics who are understanding how to wire, how to do a lot of really, really skilled work. But it is a much more inclusive skill set. But it's a skill set that can be reverse engineered down through the K-12 continuum and get kids ready through early exposure. And I'll say, you know, shamelessly, shameless plug. You know, that's why we're excited about the I innovate learning opportunities in elementary is getting kids working with their hands, which is the number one thing industry said to us is we need students who are, don't just have knowledge, but have diverse skills and know how to create, how to assess, how to work in kind of real three-dimensional material spaces and apply information to these real-world types of projects and scenarios. So I would actually argue that we're about to go through huge economic disruption. But in that disruption creates new opportunities for economic mobility. If we are super intentional about exposing our kids with qualities, competence, skills, they're going to be in demand.
So I'm just following up once, because you know I could write this for us forever. In I innovate labs, you use two words that scare. You said creative and assess. And I'm sorry, I just don't think everybody's. I, it's a scare to me, the entry-level jobs, retail, even legal and paralegal. I just, it just scares the heck out of me. Sorry.
Well, and I think I left this last quote here on the slide, even though we were chatting, because I think Mr. Masuda in Antine Union kind of speaks to this. And one of the things we can do as educators is we need to refocus on emotional intelligence and relational intelligence. Because those are the types of job fields where people work with people and the machines are taking care of automation. And so we do need to make sure that that doesn't get lost in our education.
I have sort of a process question, and that is what happens to the questions about work on the sheet?
Well, I think.
No.
I can.
I mean, what they have on the.
I can pull it up right now.
There's some good questions in there.
There are lots of good questions in there.
Might as well just start asking.
That's right. I won't feel like we're just left out to dry. Somebody has these, but I don't know. They never told me the answers.
Some of them, yeah, we can. That's the traditional thing is everybody, when they do presentations, opens chat GPT. See what it says.
That's why I should have asked my questions to you all along. I should have been writing them in those Google sheets.
Okay, I got it. Hold up. Let me maybe share my screen. All right. So the first question was, has the district implemented any positions or policies around AI yet? Either at the district or school level? What I would say about this is no, we haven't. Uh what I would say about this is no, we haven't implemented a district position other than what we talked about, the access for students and staff. Staff have access currently, students do not, because the many of the sites are not compliant with our.
They don't have it at school.
At school, thank you for the clarification, on our devices, on our network, they don't have access to it currently. Um at the school level, what I know has happened at our high schools is that English departments have created uh kind of revamped in their back-to-school night presentations a discussion around academic dishonesty policies as related to AI and have explicitly stated that if students use AI-generated materials as their own, that would be following under the policy related to this academic dishonesty and could then be uh just receive discipline for it. So that has gone on kind of at the school level, but that is all I'm aware of at this time. Um.
So I wrote that question, can I clarify it?
Sure.
Um so I think there's two discrete topics, I think AI is a really interesting broad topic, and I think chat GPT is a very specific topic.
Yeah.
And I think um the challenge that chat GPT poses is that it was introduced in January or in the last twelve months, and it's evolved rapidly. And if I'm a teacher at Slow High that used a curriculum last September, and I want to use that same curriculum now, it's a fundamentally different paradigm. And I would bet that I could complete most history and English essay assignments at a very high level of competency in five minutes in chat GPT, right? And and I also understand that that's happening now at the schools. So I mean, I believe there's students using it. Um and and so when I look at that, I go, look it up, it's a law professor and a teenager, right? And so so we could try to address this at the teacher level or at the department level, at the school level, at the district level. And just the speed it's happening is so rapid that none of our decision-making infrastructure really allows us to move this speed. But I I'm concerned we're putting our teachers on their heels, because it's being used now in the classroom.
So part of that education for our educators is I've asked to give this same presentation in our principal meetings. And we're going to develop a plan at the school level about how to have those discussions at the teacher level to start informing and developing policies. Like you heard Dr. Prater say, which is what I heard when I spoke to our educators at that and at Slow High. That the educators are implementing the two strategies to to try and catch plagiarism both using Google Docs history, making kids do drafts, as well as handwriting and and producing a lot of the assessment work in person live, so that it can't be a runaround.
Right, so I guess my question is, does every teacher need to figure that out themselves and their own strategies in a quick time?
It's not ideal.
Is that, or is there something more top-down?
We we need a team to convene, because um we need to bring our teachers on board to help us write, write what those policies and procedures are. Working alongside, in fact, um SLCTA president Phil Angel had just reached out yesterday or last night about this topic. And so we need to work with our partners.
And I'm I'm certainly not suggesting that you're going too slow, I I just think the pace of this is so rapid that it's um really daunting to challenge. So so with that context, what is the timeframe for developing those policies? Now you're facing something that's going really fast.
It'll be the next couple, probably by Christmas, we should have something in place.
Okay.
I I would like us to look at this, I would like us to look at this, you know, as a systems response.
Exactly.
Right? And whenever you have a systems change or a systems response, you need lots of inputs and lots of. And I was going to ask Lisa, that I suspect California Department of Ed is going to come out with a with a guidepost of some kind that we will then grab a hold of, AXA will do the same, so we'll have, we we will keep this conversation going. What I don't want to do is create these policies in a vacuum. Um but I think we can move pretty quickly if we're able to then move it from a systems response to then so it's not a top-down as much as it's an organizational response to something that's moving very fast, right? And so for me, I I imagine Foundation's going to want to weigh in a bit on this. Um I believe our um our educators, our administrators, and then the outside agencies are going to want to weigh in. So we're going to have this sort of like compendium of inputs. And then we'll put our policy system in place, review it with you guys, and and move forward.
So I've shared with you already the most up-to-date information like CSBA had, which was just, we have a task force working on it, we'll get you more information soon. Um the ISD guys was really the most forward piece of work in the K-12 sphere that I've seen um in my examination of. And and we'll be able to pull pieces out of that for artwork.
And I was I was excited to hear Cal Poly, you know, leaning in on this and really trying to figure it out as well. The sec, the higher heads hitting this head on, I mean, they're being influenced, impacted by this dramatically. Um so this isn't just a K-12 issue, this is a massive educational issue. Um putting it in front of you guys now, because I know it's moving quickly. We're notoriously slow in our response to things. And my biggest worry, and I think I put it in what I said, my biggest concern is that we're not, we don't train up our people quickly enough. We're not pivoting soon enough, and what ends up happening in that void in our field is notoriously blocking it, stopping it. Because, you know, because we want to protect the kids, we're going to stop doing things or prevent kids from doing things, and I think it's a big mistake. I think what we need to do is pivot, while keeping kids safe and following the law, pivot, pivot educationally in terms of lesson development, lesson design, assessment.
Yeah, and bringing even reading, really.
Really, because these are massive changes.
Yeah.
Every bit as massive as pivoting to distance learning inside of a week in our district when COVID hit. Now we have to pivot even in how we perceive, how um knowing how kids are getting, are are producing um content that's not theirs.
So if I could just add quickly, one of the strands this year at the CSBA conference is the promise and peril of technology. So I think, you know, most of the board, it's my understanding, is planning to attend. And some of the topics include plagiarism, artificial intelligence, social media, digital applications, all those kinds of things. So you know, that those of us who have a particular interest in that can attend some sessions.
Yeah, our district was selected by one of the, one of the presentations is I innovate.
Right.
Um in that strand. So I'm glad, Ellen, you're right, it's uh it's really important to get in front of this.
Um have we researched any third-party technologies that are intended to help educators incorporate or manage AI? Nothing in the eight weeks I've been here has come through our office, but I don't know if you've been, had any requests yet.
Uh we've had a few requests, you know, mainly from the art side, my art AI stuff, and I brought it to you guys' attention. That's honestly what I think started this whole discussion.
Because there are AI platforms that detect AI generation. And so, you know, I know that some of the faculty out of Cal Poly were using AI to identify AI um for the purpose of detecting plagiarism. And so, you know, it's a.
That's what I was asking about this question.
Final, yeah.
I mean, that was specifically what I should have been.
So, yeah, but it is an area we are going to need to look into more as an organization. And I'm sure the business community will continue to develop products that to sell to school districts to help manage um the AI influence. So more to come on that. Do we have any perceptions on how widely use GP, chat GPT is used across our current student base? We have not done an official student survey, um Dr. Crater could talk to the student senate about it. We could do a future Google survey to our students about it. I know as the cabinet team, we had a discussion as parents about um different, our own children, right? Accessing these tools to do different things on it, so we do, and the research suggests you have to assume students are using.
But not, and not all uses, I would argue, are problematic.
Are math, yeah.
Um and so what is the, there's the math, um.
Math photo.
Photo math.
Photo math.
So there's a, you know, generative AI that um can detect and interpret math problems, word problems. Um you know, math symbols and uh and then actually walk students through step by step how to work out that math. And I'll tell you, um you know, my daughter has used it, and I have sat with her and used it, and it is extremely helpful. When we go through the book, we go through YouTube videos, I don't know how to come alongside her.
Yeah, it's basically a tutor.
It's like a tutor.
It's a tutor.
But it is incredibly powerful, and so there's opportunity for abuse. And there's also for the mom, opportunities to empower households to work through homework and actually enhance learning.
And let's not forget, the Khan Academy has come out with Khan Amigo. They're launching it, and it's a game changer, because it's it's an AI-generated individual tutorial for kids.
In the Socratic method.
Pretty amazing stuff, and so our teachers have to be on their A-game. While AI will help them generate lessons, creative ideas, make things more interesting on one hand. On the other hand, students are are accessing these same things. And uh I have a friend, buddy of mine that I went to high school with, his, um he was, called me, he was very upset because in summer he signed his kid up for um college-level biology. And to get college credit and uh and it was all online. And he couldn't figure out why his kid was scoring far lower despite the tutor that he had purchased for her. Um his kids getting uh scoring Bs and Cs while the other kids apparently in the class were not getting it out of the park. Well, only to find out through searching the uh the, basically finding out with how the kids were talking to each other. They were all using chat GPT or versions of math photo, photo math, versions of that for biology. And they were gaming the class, acing the exams, acing the the assignments while his kid was actually doing it. And he was so upset, and I'm like, well, buddy, that's, this is what's happening. And um whether we want to become the chat GPT police, I'm not sure that's the solution either, quite frankly. I think we change the assessment model, we change how we're evaluating learning and knowledge is the solution, I think. But getting our teachers there while not burying them in more work is also something Phil Angel from SLCTA has shared with me. Like, how do we use this technology to save time? And especially in the special ed world, right? You can actually do goal development on chat GPT apparently. So there are ways that we can save time for our staff, and there are ways that we can bury our staff. And I want to find the sweet spot. This is going to be a bigger conversation, certainly a collective bargaining conversation over time, um that we're going to need to wrestle with, okay?
Yeah.
Because following up what you said, the one, the student that is using chat GPT to answer questions and ace the exams versus the one that is actually doing the work, so which one is really learning the material? So I think that um we, that's that's the sweet spot that we need to find.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. And and how we do that, I personally, I am a big huge fan of performance assessments uh in person. And um we can do that in groups, we do that in my doctoral program. No one got a free pass, no one. You are on the spot, in person, answering questions in in the real here and now.
My mouth.
With my mouth, with my, in in my little notes that I turned in. I was assessed on what I was able to demonstrate now.
Can I, can I add that that would carry for advanced education, would you have to defend your master's thesis or your doctoral thesis?
Right, right.
And so these are all good skills for them to learn and could advance their learning level tremendously.
I totally agree, so.
There was a question about whether instances we've identified AI tools by a student and how do we handle this situation? I can reach out to the school site to get more data or information to share with you and probably focus on that or include in the presentation. At this time, I don't have that data at my fingertips. Um how are teachers and students currently accessing AI tools at elementary? What's currently blocked? And I think we already talked about that a couple times. How are we celebrating, exploring, and encouraging AI in our classroom lessons rather than just blocking it? Which I think the lead teachers through the I innovate program um are exploring as a group how to use AI technologies um practically and having those discussions.
And we did have secondary kids come in and demonstrate to collaborate with the elementary teachers, so that there was a K-12 dialogue around this. And there was exposure to what secondary teachers were doing. And then Zach Roper and um you know, the IT team gave access to the AI art generators for teachers to play around with, so.
So um it's it's done right now, kind of in teacher collaboration time, we don't have a formal way to accelerate it. Uh are, have we provided any form of staff training on AI? Not that I'm aware of at this time.
No, no, because we don't have a framework yet.
No, yeah. What resources are available to staff regarding AI options and what is acceptable use? So like I said, we're developing that, we're going to talk to the principals about it shortly and expect then that there will be more information going directly into staff meetings. As well as um this presentation will be shared in the employee bulletin going out with all the resource links that I've included. So there's lots of opportunities for individuals to to read more about it. Yes, Mr. Buck?
We don't have these much, right?
Not quite yet, but if you have another question?
Nope, go for it.
Okay. Is it helpful for me to continue going through?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um is CDE developing policies? I believe so, I didn't, I looked there and didn't see much on this topic yet.
This will be without question, that there'll be an assembly bill or a senate bill coming, and I hope that it's not provincial old thinking.
Yeah.
I I hope, I'm hopeful it won't be.
Will we utilize guidance from Cal Poly? Yes, of course, we will definitely continue to try and collaborate with Cal Poly experts. What role will the foundation play? We're still developing the plan for that, they are the ones already helping through our I innovate labs at elementary. And we're looking to expand that into secondary, um so that's a question. Yeah, right, group CDE need more information.
We have a question from Erica Paul to Donald.
Hi, yes, can you hear me, President?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good, good afternoon, everyone. Um I apologize, I've I've been in and out of the meeting um based on my schedule, so I apologize if this has already been addressed. But since we're in this such early stage of thinking about these issues, and um I serve as campus dean at San Luis Obispo College of Law. Um so we're addressing many of these issues at the law school level as well. Um and I have two students uh at San Luis Obispo High School. I just want to also make sure that we're thinking about um equity in terms of how we are training and our professional development that will inevitably um surface with all of this. Um so that all of our teachers are feeling confident in this area. So that all of our students are then equitably getting that same information, that same training. Um and then in turn, developing their own confidence in this area. Something that I've been mindful of, um you know, as a founding board member, founding board member with the Education Foundation. Um you know, not every teacher was ready and confident and capable of stepping into the I innovate lab um with enough, you know, uh confidence to to make it really um something special for the students. So that's that educating, the educators component, um I do believe has an equity angle to it. That um is something that I think needs to be top of mind um in all of this and in everything that that the district does, of course. That um is something that I think needs to be top of mind um in all of this and in everything that that the district does, of course. But I just want to explicitly ensure that we always are keeping that equity lens when we're thinking about new um you know, new programs and policies and procedures and professional development. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to make clear from my perspective, you know, when we talked about, you know, the dialogue between secondary and I innovate. I view that as very much in the lane of exploration, seeking understanding as opposed to um developing policies or practices that are being implemented officially through schools. It's more opening the dialogue, very similar to the premise behind the Cal Poly convening, which was not intended to um answer questions. It was intended to surface questions and get educators dialoguing about the complexities and really thinking critically about what this could mean in their classrooms. And so my hope is that our LED teachers are, you know, those innovative thinkers who are helping um engage a teacher-led dialogue across that K twelve landscape. Not that they would be setting policy or practice for how this is showing up in their classroom.
Thank you, and Erica, I first of all, I want to thank you for bringing up you're doing this work at the law school and I'd like to connect with you offline to hear more. Cause of course, we're trying to collaborate and learn more from other education partners, lean ideas, work together. Um I did share earlier that one of our urgent needs is to develop a digital system and show media literacy program that is across our K twelve system to all students. So all students get an equal opportunity to learn about AI. Um and similarly, our our educator professional developments as they get developed. Um we would need to ensure that all teachers have an opportunity to learn more and learn from each other through their teacher collaboration time as well. So we are looking for ways to support our educators to learn more as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
The next question um was a potential check on the validity of student research to develop their oral responses and presentations more than what we have been doing. So that kind of a to Dr. Crater's point about how we need to change our assessment. It appears how we need to align our emphasis on non-college CTE coursework and our need for students to also actively consider college education. Right, so we want both college and career readiness. So students on both types of futures or expectations of themselves should have an opportunity and will need to be part of AI um ready for the world they're going into. Cause regardless of college or career, they will be, according to those quotes earlier in the presentation, having to interact with and damage effectively AI. Um and we did talk earlier also in the presentation about how we need to be sure to address the bias and discrimination which can be inherent in the AI tools um students are using.
So I think I asked that question, but I want to also make sure that we look at the second part because I it's the second question, but there I ran out of rows and I.
Oh, oh dear, okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to create any under table. But um you know, there was a comment about about framing questions to get the right answer. And don't we sometimes want them to get the wrong answer or a variety of answers in order to to foster and encourage that creativity that can result from that from different ways of looking at their question instead of just having one answer and saying, okay, that's the answer. And that's really a concern of mine that as students use AI, as I use it. As I, you know, use use Google, I get, okay, there's the answer to my question. And I realize oftentimes that hey, what happened to my own role in this? And the ability to look at things from a variety of angles that maybe I didn't even know existed. So that's a that's a concern of mine with AI is getting every and an answer equates to the answer. And so, you know, the comment that yeah, really saves time, you can ask a question and get the answer in two minutes. Well, is that the is that.
The right.
Is the how we how does that foster that creative thinking?
Thank you, Ellen, I appreciate you paying that forward, yeah.
Can I can I add?
Yeah, of course.
As an elementary educator of the past, um we were developing open-ended questions and al- already looking at. I was part of a teacher advancement program in the district where I work. And we were developing open-ended questions and to develop the higher critical learning skills. And I mean, cause when I was in college, I sometimes they use the lower level, like they're just looking for a right answer. But now we know that that doesn't teach a student how to think, only how to impress a teacher or get the best grades or whatever. So what we want is they can learn how to think and and have those given in the answer, okay?
Ellen, do you have any questions?
No, but I have a lot to digest.
Yes, do we all, yeah.
So just real quickly, I'm sitting. He was a bilingual teacher. I'm wondering what happens when you put in this question in a in a hard language? Because I'm not sure the internet, the depth of the internet may be as deep. Especially here in the United States, may not be as deep. So that student's going to be in a huge disadvantage if I if my guess is correct.
I haven't tried it yet myself and you can do some research on that.
I've tried it, I've messed around with it in Spanish and it actually gives very almost the exact same responses in Spanish.
Yes, I believe Google translate and it translates speech. Translators are actually an AI uh function. And so I believe it is.
But I can ask a question in Spanish, get a result in Spanish and then translate it to English and it matches the English equivalent. I mean, it's a worldwide tool.
Yes, it is.
I've used it all over, so I would I that's that I did an assumption that.
And then and then um when we did the the questionnaire on um survey on internet, we found somewhere, I think it was only eighty eighty about twenty percent of our kids didn't have real access internet. Now I know Jeremy's got a hotspot in almost very far now. But I'm a little bit worried about the kids that may not have access still.
Do we have that? How many ones do we have, Julie, Julie or Germany?
I have like six hundred available, you know, at the beginning of the start. I do not know on the top of my head, I'll need to check out. So, yeah, we saw the peak during COVID and uh using about an hour to about six hundred because the rough, you know.
So we would want the community to know if anyone is having trouble accessing the internet that they should reach out to our our schools to help.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you, that was really informative and sort of head spinning. So um I know we have people waiting here for our updates, but um I don't know about anything else, but. So if we come back at um, let's say like. At about five after, Chris, is that okay? Would be five, would be two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay, thank you, we'll be back. I think I'm gonna turn off the video.
Yeah.
Sorry, did you text me on that? I'm sorry.
I might have to take the video from my side, I think. Maybe I have to stop sharing for a second, Ryan, so I can turn the video on.
Okay.
Yes, Chris.
I'm, I didn't get my phone.
It says it's recording.
Yeah, so I did ask for it to start video if someone could maybe click the little video button.
On.
Got that right?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mandy.
All right. Okay, I'll keep my little presentation started, so we'll make it quick and easy. I put a few slides, just progress plans. You'll see each side kind of throw a plan or two or rendering, so you kind of get an idea of where we're at, what we're doing. So first one I'll move down to is Los Ranchos. So as Ryan mentioned, we've met with the site, met with some of the TKK teachers, and reviewed the potential layout, got their ideas, their feedback. So we've been going back and forth with the architects right now, but one of the ones, I'll just kind of zoom and make it easier. So as you can see, right, the layout, the layout of rooms are pretty much going to stay the same, except for these first two over here, where we added restrooms off the actual classrooms. So you can see that they don't have their own restroom off that classroom. A lot of requests was to make sure there's a sink outside the restrooms for washing hands, which is great.
Having a sink outside the restroom makes it faster for kids to use the bathroom. You cannot wait for them to use the bathroom and wash their hands, they use the bathroom, they wash their inside, next kid goes in. So it's a positive thing for staff.
So then we've also added a couple staff rooms on the outside of that building too, which is great. We're adding a dad molester room off the custodial room. That'll make Jeremy happy. Profile, this is more discussion about how, you know, if there's going to be a soffit for the heating and ventilation, does work or not. So we're working through that process. Move on to C.L. Smith.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
So C.L. Smith, this is a quick little layout of behind the kinder area. These are the two gray boxes here. You'll see are the temporary portables that are already out there. We're talking about bringing in another portable classroom, which is right here. As you can see, there's been some conversation. I've gone over and met with Aaron, those teachers also, walked through what they're expecting, what they're thinking. One of the last discussions we had was the ramp from existing portable to this portable. Can we connect them? So we gave them a couple different options, right? There's one option where you just walk across the existing ramp over here, then you can exit, or this layout, you can, the ramp's connected, and there's a quick little switchback, and they like that option better. Move down to the next item here, let's see. Also on this site, the existing building, one of the things they also mentioned was it'd be nice to have a restroom that's easy accessible from outside by the playground. As you can see, this was existing storage, this whole area. So we took and added two restrooms, keeping the roll-up doors unintentional, so while they're out here supervising the other children, they still can see the restrooms. Again, they got a drinking fountain in the middle, but easy, accessible. What we'll also do is we'll add another storage build to make up for that lack of storage that were taken away because of the restrooms.
So this is again a conversation we were having with the staff, because we were going to put a portable restroom on the campus. In actuality, it made more sense to put a permanent one inside this location, right by the playground, so kids don't have to go into the classroom to use the restroom. So it was a win-win, and now we don't have to do a portable restroom.
Yes. Next one, this is kind of a site view of C.L. Smith. You were also talking about replacing the childcare portals, potential layout here. This is kind of a double Y portable and then a single Y, so that's all the works. We're going to get more into detail now that we've finally finalized our
Design build.
Design build for the manufacturer of portals. Move on to Laguna. Lot of discussion in the restrooms, since that's our first focus. And what we're finding in a lot of the restrooms as we move through, that they don't meet the new ADA code. So in order to do that, like the urinals have to have more space between them, five-foot circle in front of the toilet needs to get bigger, so you lose some stalls, or you lose urinals. In this case, we're losing one urinal with boys. Women's side stays the same, so that's great. So that's a work in progress, been great.
So both Lones and Lambs are doing all of the game restrooms. All the large restrooms on both of those campuses are part of this first phase. And then the other part is focusing on roofs, HVAC, heating, ventilation, air, air conditioning, and exterior. So those are the two things that Lones and Lambs have to start.
And Chris, are we implementing gender-neutral restrooms at the middle schools?
Yes.
And so where are they located?
I don't have that planned out, but we took one of these custodial rooms and turned it into a gender-neutral.
Thank you.
So, yes.
We've got a couple on each end.
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, and that was a, it was actually a conversation we had two weeks ago, when we were walking through the architects to make sure that they were included.
Yeah, I just want to make sure those don't become staff restrooms, gender-neutral.
Staff house restrooms within the hallways already.
Got it.
So they're kind of taken care of, so this was
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
First, one of the renderings, which is kind of nice, gives you a, there's a potential look of Laguna Middle School. Right? Changes the look, modernizes it, a little color change possibly. So site loved it.
Yeah, Chris.
Yeah.
The color change, it's all reflected in their logo, so just the green.
I believe they're talking about they want to change their logo.
I just thought about your name.
This is the inner quad, where right now there's a bunch of lunch tables. One of the first renderings, continued down here, you'll see this, after we had a discussion, we talked about, we want to add some greenery, so it's just done on concrete, but this is one of the ones that came back with. And I went over and I was talking to Nathan, and that's just way too busy. It's too much, too many planner boxes, it's just, it's not free-flowing. So we came up, between Nathan and I, came up with another idea, we threw up the architects, we're still waiting for that rendering to come back.
But the goal is to add some trees to that interior quad area right now, just, you know, just asphalt, basically.
Chaco. So this, Chaco's a lot of discussions. Again, talking about restrooms, redoing restrooms, does need restrooms. We've already had a site visit, you'll see that next. We met with the kinder teachers, and you see all these red boxes, a lot of discussion, a lot of requests. And as we go through each site, some are pretty much the same, but there's some nuances, like in this case, they want two hand washing sinks outside the restroom. Now, not a big expense to add a second one, while you're right there, but yeah, we, there's a lot of markups.
Did they say why? Because they're not big, big expenses, but I mean, it's a little bit of space.
Just after lunch, after lunch, playground time, you know, you want all the kids to wash their hands, so.
It takes, it takes a while for a class of kindergarteners to try and get through a sink. And then there's all the kids in line that are messing around, so the more kids you can have at a day age, it would be, I get that.
Yeah, I'll zoom in. Like one other discussion to move the sinks to the outside.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that seems to be kind of across the board, is why we're finding that request.
So I will tell you, so when we're going into modernized classrooms, like in this case, the size is already established, right? So the goal, CDE, the goal would have 1,350 square feet for a TK preschool kindergarten classroom, but some of these aren't that, they're just not that big. So what we're doing, you'll see here, you'll see at Sinchimer, other schools, where we've tried to add some outdoor area, with maybe some shade structures for them, so they can actually turn some of their outdoor area into teaching stations, right? So Chris will show you some of that, but that's what that blue represents, kind of behind, where they've added shade structure, you put a little fence there, so kids, you know, kids can go out, do their painting outside, you know, different types of things, ride, untie it, so.
Yeah, and then we'll go back to like the classroom, like, you know, simple discussions, they want the door straight across, and then that gives us a line for linoleum versus carpet, because they do want some hard surface to work, posters, paint, then they want the carpet where they'll sit. So I'm working through all these details, which is nice, they, you know, another sink inside is up against the wall versus in the middle, gives you more counter space. Details, it's working up great. And then like Ryan was saying, you know, backside here of this building, we have these shade structures, and then I'll show you, get a better sense of what we're talking about when I get to see, Sinchimer, okay, I've got a better rendering, I'll show you kind of the concept of where we're going. Let's see, we're going to Vicious Peak. In Vicious Peak, I know we're short on time, but one of the next board meetings, I'll do that three-dimensional virtual walkthrough for Vicious Peak. It'll have more detail, we should have the modular, this modular building, more detail, so we'll do that same walkthrough that we did for Back Beach. But as you can see, this is where the existing portals are, we have, you know, layout of the modulators with a restroom unit on the end. We've gone through this building, not a lot of change, a little change in restrooms, because they're going to get a little bit bigger.
They're adding ten houses.
Yeah, so you can see, you can see the restroom changes here. Moving on to Del Mar, no, not a lot of Del Mar, we're doing restrooms, of course. This layout is pretty right on, after being with the teachers out there. A few things about playground storage, the typical things that come up. We'll also be moving sinks outside the restroom in this building. Monarch Grove, not a lot to say other than, you know, the modular, we'll be going at this end. Like I said, now that we have our modular company coming onboard, we'll get them the details, and we'll have more specifics as we move closer to that. Hawthorne, Hawthorne's been fun. So we've talked about turning the staff room, the I innovate room, and this other childcare, and the K classrooms. That also would mean adding a restroom in one of these rooms, because it doesn't have one. And then that would also mean moving the staff room, so we found a location like right above it, to make it nice, cost-effective, to add another restroom above, on the first floor, or second floor, I guess you'd call it, and then make this the staff room.
And then I innovate would move to the other side.
It would move over here.
And then where's Chug?
Here. Uh, hold on. That's the ramp, I'll get to, well, I don't have a planned view of that, but childcare would be two portals over south of the
Multi-Groove's Room.
Multi-Groove's Room on the grass right at the corner. That would also give you good access to have a separate entrance over on that side, easy to get in, get out, easy to fence off.
So they are going to have to do a lot of work, Chris has a picture of it, that front entryway, right? So trying to redo that front, the way it's set up, potentially moving the bike racks over to where the childcare portals work? So you kind of break off the bikes from the pedestrians and drop-off area, so it's, you know, some things like that that will make sense.
Yeah, I knew this was one of the markups already going back and forth. We thought, well, hey, we'll move the stairs over towards the building, but then we get into foundation issues and shoring up, and so this is still a work in progress. I even got to the point where I, you know, we were over there in the morning, watching the start of school, so we could see the flow, and that's where the conversation came up about moving the bike racks out of there, just the students coming from being dropped off, or buses, and then the bikes, it's very congested. So if we move the bikes out of there altogether to the other side of campus, that would definitely free up some space. So. Los Sosos Middle, don't have a lot in there, but the same thing as the restroom, these restrooms aren't compliant. And they're looking at them again, or they'll lose a urinal or two. Not a lot to show you on that one. We have Sinchimer, this is a fun one.
But I will say, Los Sosos and Laguna, the exterior, we're looking at doing the same type of thing, right? So where Laguna, it's these metal roofing structures, changing that look, and then at Los Sosos Middle School, they got the shape, you know, and doing kind of the same thing. So Laguna and Lones would be very similar in terms of style.
Correct. So this is Sinchimer, we've had a lot of good discussions over there. One is moving the childcare over into the staff room, and then the staff room over into the childcare room that's right off the office. You can see here, this is the food service, the NPR, this is the existing staff room, which would turn into a childcare. We would have to add a restroom. Fortunately, there's one right here in the kitchen, so we, and there's a vestibule that kind of is a walkthrough, it kind of works out pretty well. Add another restroom, and put the plumbing all on one wall, saves a lot of money, still working through those details. We also keep all the existing cabinets and sink, which they could use.
So you're going to each of the elementary sites, looking at a childcare space, right? Because it's an integral part with ELO funding, and a place where it's kind of near the front of the campus. Easy entrance exit for parents, right, picking up, dropping off kids, and yet, you know, now's a great time for us to have these conversations, moving, changing, shifting the campus, to make it more efficient, right? So, and that's, it's been positive.
So the function of the childcare room is to have a place for the kids to do out-of-structure time, while they're waiting for the parents to pick up, and it won't be any age child.
It's TK six, or TK five on the coast, TK six.
Mm-hmm, and so we won't be contracting with the Y or anybody to do
No, we do, so it gets those groups that utilize these, that, these are facilities for them to use. So you have the city, the Y, and the city more, but yeah.
So this is the office part of the building, where here's the office where you walk in currently, and then the current workroom. We would be putting a door between, which will now be the new staff room, which is currently the childcare room, and adding their kitchen, you know, the sink and stove and refrigerators. But this is a nice flow, right, right there, easy to go from staff room to workroom, centrally located, staff really liked that idea. So, and then you also have your outside entrance, so when they come to work, they can go to their staff room directly. Moving on to outside, this is the same concept that we're doing at Chaco, add the shade structure in that little area to give them more outdoor space. And as you can see, it's defined, with like a three-foot fence, looks like a honeycomb, this one, which we like. Part of the reason of doing the shade structure and solid roof is to keep that lighting in the classroom.
Yeah.
Right, so because that's a nice thing, you walk in those classrooms, there's a lot of light that goes in it. There was one classroom that was modified, that is there, and it's really dark.
The arc or insights room. Yeah, where they did the opposite. So again, this, like Chris said, the teachers keep their line of sight, because you've got windows to the outside, right? So yeah, you could close it off, where the kids aren't just walking out to the playground, having the fence there. We talked about doing a covered structure, and not just a shade structure, but the reality is, if it's pouring rain outside, nobody's outside under that covered structure, right? So this just made more sense. Again, the tables or whatever on the left, that, you know, picture is how they want to utilize this, but we see that as kind of an outdoor workspace.
And I was supposed to thank you for not using those big pieces of canvas or cloth.
Yeah, no cloth, yeah.
Those things just never hold you up.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things we're keeping is the planner boxes, they want to be able to put plants in and teach the kids, so.
Utilize it for, for
Yeah.
For kindle content, too.
And then we have the inside, just the first rendering, not the final product, but again, keeping those windows to keep that light, as you can see the shade structure in the background, still have a lot of light coming in, and yeah, that's
Techable wall services throughout our TKK classrooms, right? Teachers like to put a lot of stuff up. So talking with them, location of TV versus whiteboards has been a big conversation piece with them.
We worked through that, we're basically going to design two options. Some teachers like the TV to the right, some like it front, so we're going to give them an option to choose, you know?
Yeah.
And so the infrastructure's there, and when we get close to moving in, whoever's moving there, where do you want that? Left or right? Some like to have the students, their students, swing to the, turn to the TV, some don't, so again, options.
We're really focused on the TKK to start this program, right? This this program, right, with Measure C, um, and then again, at the two middle schools, um, the focus is really the exterior HVAC. And then, hey, let's do the, something the kids will see right away, staff is restaurants, right, redoing all of those.
Chris, when you talk about the TV and teachers, the next teacher may want it somewhere else, are you gonna have like a junction box?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so tha- that's, that's kind of where we're at, we're full speed of, you know, every week meeting with architects, discussing, uh, they're all doing great.
Finalizing schematic design.
Yeah.
Um, we'll be sharing some information in Friday notes with you, we had our first two bids come back for our lease lease back. Um, it's really excited about the cost that came um back with those and what what our bids were, uh, and so that's. That will now set the precedent for the next two lease lease back coming through, right, and uh, very competitive.
Yeah.
Cheaper than what we uh paid with Measure D in terms of our site build projects and lease lease back there, so. Um, it it was a good, good start, right?
Very good start.
Lot of competition, a lot of great contractors that we, you know, there's a handful of contractors that we would, they're all known schools, have worked with them before. They're great to work with, so, um, we're hoping that sustains as we we move forward.
Yeah, it's great, turnout's fantastic.
So let me see if anyone from the public has a question or comment about this presentation.
I do not see any hands.
Thank you, any other board questions or comments? Right.
Uh, so the shade structure, Pacific Beach had a a solar component, is that something done on any of the other projects for this space?
Yeah. Uh, no. The only, only is the deck is new, so it's a requirement, we have to add that and battery storage.
So it's a. Okay. Okay.
We talked about it potentially at Bishop's Peak, may make sense there.
Yep.
Um, so just as it, as it unfolds.
So thinking that it's a capital expense, you'd rather spend the money from the bond elsewhere and.
No, I mean, if it, if it fits and makes sense.
Yeah.
And is a proactive thing, yeah, we're all in, right, I mean, we've also talked about, just so you know, too, um.
Car charging.
Car charging.
Okay.
So that is also a component of something we um potentially have to do as we implement some of these construction projects. So those are things we're, you know, getting feedback from architects, having those conversations, and then it's also what phase are we doing at first phase? Does it make sense second phase, third phase?
Optimizing the spend around.
Right.
Right now.
When we're doing the infrastructure, you know, those types of upgrades too.
Um, my understanding is some of the, some of the electric cars can actually just plug into, I don't know, one at one ten or two twenties. And so rather, maybe rather than those fancy car chargers, which put a lot of power on.
Yeah, well, it's just changing so rapidly, right, yeah.
So. We can't, we can't do that to people in public, but so.
Okay.
The uh.
It's gonna be some way.
It's crazy, a lot of people will pull up.
Right?
Yeah, that's right.
So the the charging systems, which we're looking into, have a way of, you know, your account, swipe a card, charge. Then if you don't come move your cards, that was my concern for school, that you'll get charged after, like, you'll get an email or a text and tell you, hey, your card's done, go move it.
Need to move it, yeah.
If you don't, then you get charged, where every hour you give a lead there, so we're looking, we're looking into that piece.
But it's a, it's a tough one, I will say, right, because it is so ever-changing right now. And new automakers and what they're doing, and you know, they're all trying to compete now, different chargers and different things, so it's gonna be interesting to see how that unfolds, so. Um, but yeah, it is something we're talking about.
But you know, we we have our our electric bus that we received finally.
Oh, yay.
And it's in, it's in, it's being used. And you know, we put it, first week, we put it through the the ringer, we just sent it out to test it, like, we did the route. We ran it down to the battery, it was pretty much done, we put it on the charge sales and charged. Uh, got feedback from different drivers driving it, I drove it around the yard a couple times.
Hmm.
Uh, so it's 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 working well. It's nice, we don't have our supercharger in yet, so our backup charger for this exact case, I didn't want it to show up and I'll be able to charge it. It takes eight hours to charge it, but we're getting about a hundred twenty-four miles out of it, which we'll do a whole, whole round of data problem.
Is that eight hours on two forty?
It is, oh, yes, it's twenty-four kilo, now, don't hold me to all the turns, but I think it's, it's a twenty-four kilowatt charger. Right, and then the big one we'll be getting is not the eighty, but we'll be dealing sixty kilowatt chargers for the final charger for the bus. And then we have two car chargers also at BGT too.
But we're still faced with getting them, get.
And and I have a thought, that's all, it was all free, it was all APCD grants, so it's fantastic.
Marilyn, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm really glad that we're at least beginning to look at solar and um. Make some provisions for um electric vehicles. I I think we have a social responsibility uh as an entity to be responsible about climate. And um the future, so I I applaud any efforts that we make in that direction. And my my comment, which, and not meaning to be a cranky person, but I understand that um. AI is is a very big and important issue and one that I don't know much about, I know more now. But that took the lion's share of of this four hour period. And left us with a half an hour for these measure Measure C issues, which are very important. And as we flip through, I could barely get oriented to, you know, oh, this is the site, okay, and then it's gone and we're to the next one. And I just need more time to look at the plans and have the opportunity to discuss with um Ryan and Chris. What we're really doing at each site, I I I think Measure C got real short shrift in this study session. And um, and I just need to say that.
I'm more than happy to spend any individual time with you to go slower, I I I apologize, it was fast, I just know we're we're.
I I don't, I don't fault you, yeah, I mean, you sat through the whole, everything, it's um.
I did, Marilyn, we'll make sure to allow additional time.
Sufficient time, absolutely, because it's all very important.
Yes.
I think we're finally at a time too where we can now, like, we have some good schematic designs to share with you more. So we actually have some information that we can walk you through and do that, so we'll, you know, maybe at the the next, next meeting, we'll uh, we'll go through those more depth.
The the one, I'm gonna jump back to the charges real quick, the one other thing that I've considered looking into is adding a supercharger at the high schools. And reason, cause I think the room, all of us, all school districts, you're having to consider this for for athletics. Right, so we can, the bus will reach Bakersfield, but we couldn't get it back, right? But if there's a supercharger there, we have our cap, when we swipe, we plug in, in less than an hour and a half, that bus is fully charged, we can get back. So find a location on the site, because maybe that's, that's our next, next piece, and to give distance to our buses. Instead of having to use the diesel buses all the time, so I'm sure the other districts will start, start involved soon on that.
And and the key will be to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place. So don't get hung up on what what charger we're using, what machine it is or whatever, but do we have electricity to the parking lot? Right, like, that's the part that we need to make sure we're doing right now as we proceed, uh, and so that's something.
And still learning a lot about it, you know.
It changes all the time.
Learn something new every day, so it's good. But tha- another, another note is we added, we tried out another uh battery powered mower, it dropped off for a couple days. And we wanted this one, cause you know, we had one, but it wouldn't mow the whole football field, so this one went two days without charging. Woo, and mowed all the football field, all Taylor Field, Bellevue, Santa Fe, no complaints, mowed it, it's quiet. No complaints from teachers.
Can't hear.
So that's a, that's a pretty big stride in the battery world for mowers for our guys, so.
Yeah, that's cool.
I saw them up there at Taylor Field, it's it's snazzy. Yeah.
Yeah, green, another green machine.
It's a word, I hear, I hear it's a word.
Any other questions?
I have one, I have one question. On Measure D, um, how much is left in the tank there?
About nine million.
Okay.
I'll be coming back with that too.
Okay.
So I've been, because of the financial issue that we faced with county cyber attack.
Yeah.
There, we're, Katie just catching up with un-audited actuals where we have finally, so that, we'll bring that back too, I would say in October.
Cool.
I have my kind of my CBLC report that I put together with the annual updates, I'll share that with you as well, that our next meeting. Make sure it's gonna be officially caught up, finished with the district budget uh this week. And so next week, we're gonna sit down and kind of finalize the other funds and and get that information there.
Do you ask them more of it?
Yeah.
Have the higher interest rate environment benefited us in terms of Measure C and the economy?
Yes.
Should pay your like.
And I want to say it was like six hundred thousand dollars in Measure C interest that we earned uh since February.
Okay, so our interest level, it is higher than we thought.
So, and it's still, it's still on the lower margin, right, cause we hold it in the county treasury, which is super, super, super safe.
Yeah, it's low.
Fun, right, um, that said, when you put ninety million dollars in the bank. You earn some good interest, right, so that's part of, like we talked about early on, I wanna turn that three hundred fifty million into four hundred million, right, long term. And that will be one of the ways that we do it.
Great.
Uh, it's one of the ways we did with Measure D.
Anything else?
I missed the beginning of Brian's comment.
Yes, uh, the interest rates, the higher interest rates, if that's helping us now with uh with Measure C.
But at the beginning, he he was asking you about what monies were remaining from Measure D, I think I heard that.
Yes, yes, kind of where we're at with Measure D. And so I, right now, it looks about nine million, but I wanna get the precise number. For, you know, pardon, putting it down in my CBLC report, I'm just waiting for Katie to finish up un-audited actions for the school district, and then we'll be doing that next week.
So is that nine million unencumbered, or is that nine million allocated?
It's all encumbered. All of them are being encumbered. And more.
So that, so we will not realize that as a savings, it's encumbered.
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's an important, that's an important clarification, Marilyn, that was good.
Yes.
It's what?
So that's a very important clarification you made, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, we'll call this a wrap, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You look great, Marilyn.
Oh, thank you.